I'd like to call the Gurnee Village Board, regular meeting of June 6th, 2016, to order. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Ballmas.
Present.
Hood.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Six President.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before I open the floor for public comment, just like to remind everybody that the Lake County Restaurant Week, first ever, kicks off, it runs from June 10th to June 19th, and you can check out all the menus in advance at the Visit Lake County website. The kickoff is at the Chocolate Sanctuary this Wednesday, from 4:00 to 6:00, I think. I didn't look it up.
Yes.
4:00 to 6:00, okay, so, everybody, come out and join us. This is exciting, and quite a few of Gurnee's restaurants are participating, and hopefully our new one may be next year. Public comment, if you'd like to address the board? State your name for the record.
My name's Len Petrovic. I live on Grove Avenue on the east side. I have, first, it sounds like a stupid question, probably is, what is a street? Is it a thoroughfare for automobiles, or is it a parking lot? Can you park cars there, as a matter of fact, you know, other than having family occasions or a visit every day, parked on the edge of the road? Today I went by for one whole block, there had to be eight cars parked there all day, and they're still there, just before I came here.
Were they parked there because they might not be able to access their property on another street?
I can't hear you.
Were they parked there possibly because they may not be able to access their own driveway because of construction?
No, they're there, they've been there since last year, off and on, and I come to find out today, when I went past these eight cars, two of them are from Wisconsin, one has no plates, they're parked on the road. Now, on the other side of the street, there's one car, so, even though that's a wide street to begin with, only one car can get through. On my block, on Grove Avenue, it's a narrow street. On the end of the block, a person parks his car or truck, two wheels on the pavement, almost every day. Only one car can go by, so, the question is, if I try to squeeze through there, and I wipe out cars on both sides of me, is whose fault is it?
All right.
Can you park on a street, as a matter of fact?
I need David, because I, some streets allow parking and some don't, and he's probably got some quick summary.
As a default, all streets do allow parking, except for 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., so we do make sure that they're clear overnight.
So, I could park on the street?
You can park on the street through the day, as long as it is not signed, no parking.
Okay, so I could pull my house trailer on, or my travel trailer on the street? I mean, isn't that sort of stupid, to be able to do that?
Except for between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. You have to clear the street every night.
So, you can make a two-lane road, essentially a one-lane road, right? Right. My question is, they're redoing Magnolia and Bell Plain right now, they're doing a beautiful job. They're making it wider than it was. Why didn't, if we can do that, why don't they just make them one lane? Just make a one-lane road? Because you could park on the street, so what's, you know, I always thought a road was for automobile access, not parking. If you have vehicles, that's your responsibility where to put them, not ours.
And that's why we have the no parking overnight between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m., to make sure that everybody can accommodate their vehicles.
What's the difference? There's more traffic during the day than there is at night.
Correct.
So, you're restricting, or you're inhibiting more traffic during the day than at night. At night, it's like blowing in the wind, it just doesn't make any sense. Cars are in and out during the day, all day.
I know, but we, and we do make some streets no parking if a majority of the residents request it, but then you cannot park on the street at all anymore, and then people lose the ability.
Well, within reason, come on now. Like I say, every day, five days, sometimes six days, on the end of my block, there's a car parked with two wheels on the pavement. Two cars can't get through. And like I say, on, this was on Grandview and Bell Plain. On Grandview, there's eight cars, nine cars there right now, they've been there all day.
Do you think?
And as far as I know, as far as I was told, there's an automobile repair shop down near Grand Avenue, and they park the cars there that are being repaired.
That was going to be my next question, that was my, going to be my next question. Do you not believe that they belong to the residents? So, now, that's a different matter, that can be handled, and followed up by our police department, because that would be an inappropriate use for parking along there.
Okay, and I have, I called code enforcement, two months ago, on Bell Plain, 1605 Bell Plain, the car's been sitting in the driveway, four flat tires. When I called, they says, "Oh, somebody's already called about that." A little while later, instead of sitting on four flat tires, the car is sitting on wooden blocks, under the frame, to keep the tires off the ground. I drove by today, there's three flat tires on the car.
Okay.
Same, same address.
Okay.
And, I talked to you about 1424 Magnolia, that's a residential area, a guy is running a garage, he's got a car carrier, flatbed car carrier, tow truck comes in and out, a dump truck comes in and out, the other day, an equipment trailer came in, there's two big boats sitting in the driveway, and I thought, you can't do that in a residential area. And if that's the case, I have an empty corner lot, can I put a used car lot there?
All right, that, that's inappropriate. Now, we've had a transition going on in code enforcement with our staff, and we have somebody new coming on, so we'll get caught up, that'll go to the top of the list, but keep in mind, just, it's, there's a process, there's due process to it, just because we come out there, doesn't mean everything disappears overnight. There's an escalation process to it, so it does take some time before it gets really painful for them.
Okay.
But we do, we, we'll follow up.
But like I said, I've called, starting two months ago. Now, can I expect results in a timely manner, or am I being too presumptuous? You know, two months was-
Once we get past the warning, and we get into the ticket, it's usually a ticket that adds up every day, and then at some point, we may decide to take them into court, and that can be 18 to 24 months.
Mayor, if I may, the 1424 Magnolia, we've been through that, been by that site a few times, two or three, maybe four times, and have not witnessed any of the things that he's indicated. That doesn't mean that they've not been there, but when our code enforcement officers have done their investigation, they have not seen that. We will continue to monitor it, and if we do see something there that's inappropriate, or any indications that they are running a garage there, we will begin the, or the, begin the escalation process at that point.
Okay.
Okay, and Patrick, when I mentioned to Patrick about 1424 Magnolia, two weeks ago, I answered about the flatbed car carrier, you said it goes by weight.
I said some of that.
What is the weight restrictions on a vehicle that's not allowed in a residential area? Where do I find that?
You can have a flatbed trailer-
It's a flatbed car carrier.
A trailer, up to a two-axle trailer.
Up to a tractor trailer.
Up to a two-axle. You can have a two-axle trailer on your site.
Trailer, not a flatbed truck. This is a truck.
You said a trailer.
No, I said, I meant a flatbed car carrier truck.
A truck?
That's where the bed sits, and you pull them up.
Okay, that would not be appropriate, that would be deindeep.
It's been sitting there for months, and I talked to you two months ago about that, and you were going to look into it.
Yes.
And it's sitting there, just before I came here.
When my code enforcement officer was by there, he did not see it on-site. He's been by there two or three times.
You know what, can I recommend an optometrist for him? They don't see it? Have, would you have them stop at my house, and I'll take them there, and I will show them? I'll lead them by the hand. I mean, come on, I, you know-
I'm not going to argue with you, I'm telling you what my officer has told me when he visited the site.
I realize that code enforcement people are part-time, and they got a lot to do. I sympathize with them, but, it's just, after a while, I get up to here, that's my neighborhood. When my neighborhood looks like crap, my house is worth less money, that's my biggest investment, and nobody has a right to devalue my house. I don't care who I get upset at, or gets upset with me. I'm going to keep complaining and complaining until something gets done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, it's on our radar, we will keep following up until we see what you're seeing. Okay, you got the other one. Any other public comment? Anyone else want to address the board? All right, then I'll move on to, approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Some moved.
Motion by trustee Ballmas.
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Patrick, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Ad. 1, approval of the minutes from the May 16th, 2016 Village Board meeting. Ad. 2, approval of resolution 2016-04, agreeing to indemnify the state of Illinois for photo enforcement equipment attached to IDOT facilities. Ad. 3, approval of setting a bid date of June 24th, 2016, for 2016 server refresh and storage expansion project. Ad. 4, approval of setting a bid date of June 30th, 2016, for fire station #2 apparatus floor replacement project. Ad. 5, approval of payroll for period ending May 14th, 2016, in the amount of $799,649.49. Ad. 6, approval of payroll transfer journal for period ending May 14th, 2016, in the amount of $791,944.55. Ad. 7, approval of payroll for period ending May 28th, 2016, in the amount of $755,830.45. Ad. 8, approval of payroll transfer journal for period ending May 28th, 2016, in the amount of $748,204.76. Ad. 9, approval of bills for the period ending June 6th, 2016, in the amount of $2,159,982.26.
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read into the record? Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we'll move on, we have no petitions and communications.
Correct.
No reports.
Correct.
No old business.
Correct.
We will move on to new business. The first item is approval of issuing a Class 1 liquor license to Juan Ramirez to operate Jalisco Mexican Restaurant at 4949 Grand Avenue. Patrick?
Sure. So, you had a short memo from me on this, Mr. Ramirez applied for a Class 1 liquor license for Jalisco Mexican Restaurant, which is located in Grand Mill Plaza. We currently have one Class 1 available, as the Avalon Restaurant did not renew their liquor license. Police Department did all the necessary background checks, and found nothing to preclude issuing the license. Therefore, staff is recommending issuing it, and it's ready for your consideration.
All right, any questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from trustee Wilson, second by trustee Thorstensen. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Abstain.
Wilson.
Aye.
Five I, one abstain.
All right, motion carries. Welcome to the Village of Gurnee, we'll be excited for your opening day, you're all set. All right, item number two, approval of ordinance 2016-
37.
37, adding one Class 4 license, and removing one Class 7 liquor license, by amending Section 6-56 of Article 2 of Chapter 6 of the Gurnee Municipal Code entitled Alcoholic Beverages, as last amended by ordinance #2016-19, passed March 21st, 2016. Patrick?
So, again, another memo from me, this is truing up the number of licenses issued with what's in the municipal code. I kind of went through what had happened, there was a staff error with the Class 4 licenses, where we actually removed two last time, we tried to true this up, and we should have only removed one, so that's the reason for adding the one Class 4 back in. And then the Class 7 is, just like Italy, did not renew their liquor license, so it's appropriate to reduce that class number by one. And then, as I mentioned in the memo, going forward, this has been assigned to a finance staff member, to keep a better eye on this, so we don't have to come back in the, in the future and correct previous staff errors.
That's where due diligence belongs.
Yes.
With Brian.
Right.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Motion by trustee Ballmas.
Second.
Second by trustee Garner.
Can I do it? Yeah, okay.
Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six I.
Motion carries. Item number three, approval of ordinance 2016-38, granting a special use permit pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance for property located at 885-887 South Route 21.
Sure. So, you had a memo from our planning manager, Tracy Velkover, on this, this relates to a sign for AAA tent. Mr. Noakowski, the owner, is requesting a special use permit to increase the height of a ground sign from 12 feet to 25 feet for his property down there at 120 and 21 area. Zone's C2, so signs up to 12 feet are allowed by right, up to 18 feet with a minor exception, and then anything over 18 feet is a special use permit. The reason he's looking for the 25-foot-tall sign is because of the topography down there. Those that are familiar with it know that AAA sits lower than Route 21, about 13 feet, so he's looking to the 25 feet, the 13, to get them up to Route 21, and then the 12 feet allowed by right for a ground sign. Was before the Planning and Zoning Board on May 18th, received a unanimous favorable recommendation, did have one concern, with the base of the sign is we don't allow pole signs, so it's got to be covered, skirted, that that may appear very large, but based on the topography, only about 50% of that skirting would be viewable, as the rest would be below the grade of Route 21, so that alleviated their concern. So, as I said, was before the Planning and Zoning Board, and they're affording a favorable recommendation, and now it's ready for your consideration. I know Mr. Noakowski is here, if you have any questions.
Questions from trustee? It's going to look big, Greg.
Yeah, this one's a bit big, but it, I know where it is, so I think it's okay.
I have a perception problem, too, with signs. Questions from the other trustees? Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Motion by trustee Garner.
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Yes.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six I.
All right, motion carries, you're all set. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're pulling this one right now. All right, item number four, we're being polled because, we are polling because the petitioner's not here tonight. Do I need, I don't need, I don't need to continue it?
No, we'll just, no, you don't have to continue, we'll-
We'll reschedule it when the petitioner's able to be present.
Yeah, he wasn't able to make it tonight.
All right, so we'll move on to item number five, approval of ordinance 2016-39, accepting the final plat of Wentworth Gurnee.
Sure, so you had a memo from our village engineer, Scott Bickey, on this, the next two items are related. The first one's a final plat of Wentworth Gurnee, which is out there at the Bobby's Driving Range property. Took a look at it, just two deviations that were noted, fee in lieu of installing sidewalk along Gauges Lake, and then fee in lieu of installing the pedestrian path along Hunt Club Road, and then the horizontal curves don't meet the minimum 100-foot radius. Both of these were known, as they were in the preliminary PUD plat, so therefore it wasn't a surprise to staff, and consistent with what was originally proposed, therefore staff is recommending consideration, or recommended approval, sorry.
I have a question.
Trustee Garner?
When we do fee in lieu of, they provide a fee to the village, and is it then installed by us, or is it just not installed?
Well, it's our choice, I mean, it goes into a fee in lieu of fund, and then we decide how we want to spend that money, so that's, this is an area you guys want to spend the money on, just like the, you know, the tree fund. We've been using that for ambulance board replacements, but it's at your discretion.
Okay.
I have a question also.
Question, trustee Thorstensen? I'll let her go for it now.
So, I had a similar thought to Greg, but then, are there sidewalks presently near the property? Will we be causing like a break in the sidewalk service?
Gee, that was the 30-minute conversation we had before we came in here, not about this project, but about sidewalks.
There will continue to be an internal network of sidewalks, both onto South Fork Drive into South Ridge, as well as onto Doral Drive in Rolling Ridge. However, the perimeter sidewalks on Hunt Club and Gauges Lake Road, there are no continuous sidewalks going either direction from the site.
So, don't we, do we pick up sidewalks at South Ridge going north, to Washington, or not even there?
Say that again.
So, we don't have sidewalks up until the BP, north of the BP?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Which one, we get the walkability project kicked off, these are all things that we'll start capturing. I have a question, trustee Ross.
Mine was a similar one to that, that if, that was one of the things in the strategic plan, that people were asking for sidewalks, so, I would have thought that we would just put it, have them put it in, as part of their project.
We do have, you know, we did do a sidewalk design through this corridor several years ago, so we do have some plans on the shelf, with some funding in future years, we can go ahead and implement that. At this point, though, it didn't make as much sense to do just a short segment, we'd rather do the whole duration. And this will, this will provide the funding for it, you know, it's a fair amount of funding to be able to implement those sidewalks in the future as part of our bigger project.
What we've talked about, David's talked about, when we, because, you know, we have a lot of places, we have sidewalk, and it stops, and it picks up three houses later, and go, so we're, our new unwritten policy is corner to corner, basically, so when we can go corner to corner, and just do the whole thing, otherwise, we end up upsetting people, and creating an even worse public safety situation, when they're jumping on and off, yeah.
But I guess then the next question is, is that fee in lieu of enough money to accomplish it, when we're ready to accomplish it?
It should take care of their portion of it. That's, we, we basically charge on a square foot basis, based upon the length of the subdivision.
Thank you.
How did we end up with access on Gauges Lake? I see there's no right-in, right-out, even for the commercial piece?
The commercial piece has a, there's a language on the plat that does not preclude it, it depends upon what the use is that ends up being on the commercial piece. The language in the, on the plat basically allows for it, if it meets the standards of Lake County Department of Transportation, but I believe their latest inclination was that at most, it would be a right-in.
Right-in only?
A right-in only.
How about a de-acceleration line, lane to Muirfield, was that considered?
Sorry, what was that?
The de-acceleration to make the right turn onto Muirfield? Did I, did LC dot require that?
Onto Muirfield, the existing street? No, there's no improvements to Gauges Lake Road required.
Okay, so we won't even get, we won't even have a turn lane at the light?
Let me think. For westbound?
First, northbound onto Hunt Club, so westbound to northbound.
Westbound onto northbound, no.
Because that stacks already, once a day.
That's correct, isn't it, Tim?
The turn lane would be from, is just on Hunt Club, turn onto Wentworth Drive, is all required?
Yeah.
And when the commercial would come in, then it would be addressed as far as that right-in or right-out, and whatever additional acceleration or turn lanes would be required as part of that.
Yeah, it's at a point where, once a day, it needs that turn lane, the evening, because it's stacking pretty bad already, and the other two corners are not within the village, so we'd have, they could build on that southwest corner, and traffic, we could end up with more traffic in the village, still not get a turn lane. I definitely would bring it up if any, when the commercial development starts, I, that's really something that's necessary there, and we've had complaints about the stacking, so, okay.
And anytime that, you know, an access point comes out onto a Lake County DOT highway, which both Gauges Lake and Hunt Club are both Lake County DOT highways, they need to get a permit from Lake County DOT, and at that point, they'll evaluate the adjacent roadway system, and if there are any turn lanes necessary at that point to accommodate their access points, that's when it gets required.
We can influence that, don't we?
We can, now.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Motion by trustee Ballmas.
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Roll call, please.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six I.
All right, and also connected with this is number six, approval of ordinance 2016-40, granting the final PUD plan pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance for 491 South Hunt Club Road. Motion to approve, or, well, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, under the current zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator takes a look at the plans submitted, to make a determination whether they're in conformance with the preliminary PUD. David took a look at them, as a zoning administrator, and determined that they are in substantial conformance with what was originally presented in the preliminary PUD, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wilson, second by trustee Garner. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six I.
All right, motion carries. Welcome to Gurnee, I think it was a year ago exactly, that we were doing the meetings with the neighborhood and stuff, so, finally getting there, it's going to be a nice project, and we're excited.
Thank you, you're established incredibly well.
Good, thank you. All right, then. Item number seven, approval of ordinance 2016-41, amending the annual budget of the Village of Gurnee, County of Lake, State of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2016, and ending April 30th, 2017. This is due to a Department of Homeland Grant, Department of Homeland Grant 90-10 award for a fire department unit, number 1352 replacement.
Sure. So, Deputy Chief Kavanaugh, the grantmaster in the fire departments, has secured another grant. They got word on May 20th, that they got a $386,000 grant through the Department of Homeland Security, that's a 90-10 match, for the replacement of fire unit 1352, which is a squad, basically a big toolbox on wheels, you might want to think of it as. So, in order, we need to accept the grant, we've got one year to spend it, so that the next two items on the agenda are the related. What we need to do is to amend the budget to show for that revenue, so add $386,000 on the revenue side, and then the expense of 445, we are responsible for coming up with 10% of the grant amount, and then also, when they spec'd out this piece of equipment, there are some add-ons that we need to meet our requirements, so they factored that in. um, so they factor that in. So the maximum out of pocket for the village on this piece of equipment would be $58,636,000. Um, so like I said, the first one here is to amend the budget and then the second one is to award the unit. Um, they, they want, they're looking to work with, uh, Fire Service Inc., um, under a, a contract that's currently out there, uh, through the HGAC, HGAC Buy Program. We work with Fire Service Inc. on our other equipment and been very happy with, with the, the quality of, uh, equipment that they've built for us. So first one's amend the budget, second one is to award to Fire Service Inc. It is about a year lead time to get this thing built and we've got to spend the grant a year, so we're, they're under a pretty tight timeframe, so they want to get this going ASAP.
John, very good work.
Move to approve.
Motion by trustee Ross.
Second.
Second by trustee Garner. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six A.
Motion carries. I didn't see the press release from, John, the press release from Senator Durbin's office?
No press release yet.
Okay, because they had called like last week about, okay, so it just hasn't gone out yet, okay. But we can count on this, right? All right, next item, as Patrick mentioned, is approval of request from the fire department to waive bidding requirements and utilize the HGAC Buy Fire Service Apparatus Contract Number FS 12 dash 15 to purchase a heavy rescue squad from Fire Service Inc. at a cost not to exceed $445,000 as part of the grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ballas, second by trustee Garner. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six A.
All right, I think your fire department's set on new equipment this year. All right, item number nine, approval of request from Public Works Department to waive bidding requirements and utilize Northwest Municipal Conference Suburban Purchasing Cooperative to purchase a hydro excavator from Standard Equipment Company at a cost of $390,965. Wow.
Yeah, so Public Works did not get a grant, but we put it on the agenda anyway, so. Uh, this was in this year's budget. We had talked about before, uh, the Vector, um, is, was purchased in 2002 and with how operations have changed, they've been using it for, uh, operations on the field that it really wasn't meant for as far as the, um, the hydro, the excavation feature. So that's been roughing the equipment. It's costing some maintenance. So they're looking to get in the right piece of equipment for the job, which is this hydro excavator, um, looking to go through the Northwest Municipal, uh, Conference Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, which, um, solicited prices for this piece of equipment in the past, um, and, and got the best price here through Standard. Looking to put on a Peterbilt chassis, which is what we've been buying for the plow, so that'll main, maintain the consistency with the fleet. We've also had some standard equipment in the past and have been happy with that. Um, so Craig worked with, uh, the guys up there and with Tom and got this spec down. Um, looking to give us, uh, $30,000 for our Vector, which we think is a good deal towards a trade-in, so the net comes on at the three ninety-nine sixty-five.
Well, that costs almost as much as a fire truck.
It's a big piece of equipment.
Yeah. It's expensive operation. Questions for Pat or Tom's here too?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from trustee Ballas, second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six A.
All right, motion carries. Did everybody get to see the new truck outside before the meeting? That is a slick truck. That is nice. It's heated.
Mobile garage.
That's the best part. Um, all right, item number ten, approval of request from Public Works Department to utilize the National Joint Powers Alliance to purchase the Chevrolet 2500 HD chassis at a cost of $28,872.22.
Sure. Public Works had one pickup truck chassis in this year's budget. We've gone through the National Joint Power Alliance, which is a purchasing cooperative, uh, the last couple of years for our pickup trucks. Um, so the, the price on the chassis is the twenty-eight eight seventy-two twenty-two is, as the mayor said. Um, and this should about round out the equipment for the most part for Public Works this year, so.
Just this year?
Just this year.
There might be one more piece coming, but this will round out most of it.
Make a motion to approve.